I want to welcome everyone to our March 15, 2018 meeting. And in keeping with our longstanding tradition here at Council Chambers, as we begin our Utility Board and City Council meetings, we're always mindful of those in distress who could use our best thoughts, wishes, prayers. And I'm mindful that we've lost a couple of prominent community members in the last couple of days, one of which is Les Shreve, honored veteran, longtime member of the American Legion, and I think the VFW both. And also, I just found out earlier this afternoon, quite the character that he was, that Carson Yeager has died.
What's his last name?
Yeager. So let's keep the memories of Les Shreve and Carson Yeager both alive as we have our moment of silence. Thank you very much. Senator Mike Ross, would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Thank you all very much. We've got lots of guests, but before we get started, in keeping with our other longstanding tradition, we've got a number of Wesleyan students. Would you guys mind standing facing the camera and give us your name, hometown, and your major course of study at the college? College students, I think we're back around to Mr. Neuer.
I'm Logan Neuer, and I study accounting.
I'm Jordan Miller, and I study business management.
Where are your hometowns?
Virginia.
Uniontown, Pennsylvania.
Uniontown, okay.
I'm Anna Bennett. I'm from Berlin, Pennsylvania, and I'm a marketing and music theory double major.
I'm Lindsay Wilson. I'm from French Creek, and I'm an environmental studies major.
Jake Borden from Keene, Hampshire, accounting major.
Walker Carroll from Bloosburg, West Virginia. I'm an arts administration major.
Zach Henderson from Butler, Pennsylvania, accounting major.
Brandon Ford from Hurick, West Virginia, and my major is accounting.
Any other students? Okay, and we're going to be introduced here just in a few minutes to our foreign links around the globe, right? You guys are going to tell us who you are. We'll get to you in just a few minutes. But the first honored guest, well, the college students are honored guests too, right? But we want to recognize a couple of people tonight who have been longtime supporters of Buchanan, but because of their recent activities, very favorable to our Stockard Youth Center, it's timely that we especially recognize them this evening. And I would ask first that Mike Ross come up. Mike, would you mind joining me up front here? Thirty-five years ago when we met, I didn't need these glasses to read something like this.
I met David when he came to town.
He had a lot more hair, right? So did you. Whereas longtime community resident Mike Ross has been an excellent contributor to our high quality of life in Buchanan for decades, being a steadfast supporter of our local government in many ways, West Virginia Wesleyan College, and most recently, the City's Stockard Youth Center, which he has very generously supported. And whereas Mike Ross further formerly served as our county senator in the West Virginia Legislature, and in his role as Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, spearheaded many positive projects resulting in substantial road improvements throughout Buchanan and Upsher County. And whereas Mike Ross recently contributed the sum of $10,000 toward the City's Stockard Youth Center's capital campaign to assist in the realization of the much-needed new auditorium gymnasium at S Y C while challenging other contributors to match his gift, and which challenge successfully resulted in an additional $10,000 gift. And whereas our Buchanan-Upsher community appreciates and values the efforts, energy, and dedication of one of our finest residents, and wishes to honor and commend him in his continued positive mission, supporting the youth of our community, and whereas our city now desires to recognize Mike Ross by bestowing upon him our city's highest honor with the Ambassador's Award. Now therefore, I, as Mayor of the City of Buchanan, pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim Thursday, March 15, 2018, to be Mike Ross Day throughout our city of Buchanan. To further memorialize Mike Ross's devotion to and affinity for our Buchanan-Upsher community, I further now hereby bestow upon him the Buchanan Ambassador Award, becoming one of the very few recipients and honorees of this prestigious award. Appropriately, I direct the installation of a permanent placard upon the Ambassador's Bench on East Main Street in front of our City's Stockard Youth Center to permanently honor Mike Ross, bearing the inscription, "The Ambassador's Bench, honoring those who selflessly dedicated their lives to the service, promotion, and advancement of Buchanan." Additionally, Mike Ross shall be forever recognized as a Gold Level contributor upon the S Y C Wall of Fame and the Tree of Giving to be established in the entrance to our Stockard Youth Center. I further urge all of our residents to greet our community's most honored citizen, Mike Ross, along with his family, friends, and all members of our city government family during his special day, given under my hand and the official seal of the City of Buchanan this 15th day of March, 2018. Mike. If you could stick around for a couple of minutes, we've got another one of your friends who's a rascal that we're going to recognize, and then we'd like to get pictures of both of you together with some of our Stockard Youth.
I recruited another one.
You recruited another?
I have a third one.
I thought, well, you just keep those checks coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Tim Critchfield, would you mind joining me up front here? So, you know, Mike kind of put that challenge out, and it was about three days later, this guy calls and says, "Okay, make him give another 10." That was a true story, wasn't it?
I was wondering if it was a matching contribution.
That's right. Yes, you were. This is another proclamation. Whereas longtime Buchanan-Upsher resident Tim Critchfield has been an excellent contributor to our high quality of life in Buchanan for decades, don't want to make you any older than what you are, being a steadfast supporter of our local government in many ways, and most recently supporting both the realization of our Buchanan Dog Park and our City's Stockard Youth Center, which he has very generously supported. And whereas Tim Critchfield, as President and Principal Owner of High Point Construction of Buchanan, has been a primary builder of iconic structures throughout our community, including buildings located upon the campus of West Virginia Wesleyan College, and major renovations at both our City's Stockard Youth Center and Public Safety Complex. And whereas Tim Critchfield recently contributed the sum of $10,000 toward the City's Stockard Youth Center's capital campaign to assist in the realization of the much-needed new auditorium gymnasium at S Y C. And whereas our Buchanan-Upsher community appreciates and values the effort, energy, and dedication of one of our finest residents, and wishes to honor and commend Tim Critchfield in his continued positive mission, supporting the youth of our community, and whereas our city now desires to recognize Tim Critchfield by bestowing upon him our city's highest honor with the Ambassador's Award, and I'm going to cut down to the language because it's the same thing as what you just heard of Mike Ross, is this placard that will bear your name on the Ambassador's Bench, which bears these words, "Honoring those who selflessly dedicated their lives to the service, promotion, and advancement of Buchanan." And like Mike, additionally, Tim Critchfield shall be forever recognized as a Gold Level contributor upon the S Y C Wall of Fame and the Tree of Giving to be established in the entrance to our Stockard Youth Center. I further urge all of our residents to greet our community's most honored citizen, Chief Tim Critchfield, along with his family, friends, and all members of our city government family during his special day. By the way, see, Mike only got like five hours. You get all of tomorrow. I'm just saying, Mike. Given under my hand and official seal of the City of Buchanan this 15th day of March, 2018. Tim, we sure appreciate the. We want Mike to come up with our Stockard Youth Center Board members who are here tonight, and Deborah Brockelman, Rob Buddy Brady, Deborah Brockelman, please come up, and Mike, come back up here so we can get another shot for the press. Oh, wow. We should get a picture of the check, right?
We've got another contributor there. He ought to be in the picture.
Absolutely. Come on up.
Dave.
Yeah, come on up.
He's got a check too.
Ambi won't let me hang onto this check long. I mean.
A. James Mouchen used to say, "Take as many as you like." Come up here, Dave.
A. James used to ask.
Can you guys move together?
Pretend like we like each other.
Get one more here.
Hi, Dave. How are you?
Good.
Pretty well, thank you. Sneak right in.
Here.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, great guy.
Now you're eligible.
We're going to break ground tomorrow. Oh, Katie wants a shot.
She wants a long shot.
A long. Yes, it was. We'll recognize you soon. Thank you very kindly. Appreciate it. Thank you all very much. Tim. Ambi, before I tuck it away and stick it in my wallet and lose them or something. Oh, no, you're good. Thank you very much.
Good to see you all.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Tim.
See you later.
Thanks again, folks. Okay, that takes us down to B3, and you know, if you stick your head in, I'm kind of a nippy guy, and when we have something exciting going on, like what we've had going on down at the old daily grind site, which is now Stone Tower Pros, right? James Kane, I think he's ready to lock the door when he sees my shadow showing up, like, oh, here comes that guy again. But Rob Linger and James Kane are here this evening, and we'd love to get an update on your exciting venture just up the street from us. Rob, how you doing?
Living the dream. We're excited to be here. We've been making a lot of great progress. You know, if anybody's had the opportunity to walk by and just come on in, usually during the week, you'll see one of these two here. By the way, this is Courtney Page.
We know her.
She's a Buchanan local, and she's the new manager. She's been training with us for the past about week and a half now. She spent all of last week at our shop in Fairmont, getting trained up on sort of how we do the coffee and how to manage the day-to-day operations of a coffee shop. So we're really excited about the progress, and it's been great seeing everybody who's coming in and stopping to say hi to us. We've got signage in the works, and I know that CJ is working with us on that, and we're really appreciative of that. So we've submitted our paperwork for the license to serve beer, and I see that's later down here on the list.
I'm always saying it from an insurance perspective.
That's right. So that's the main thing at this point, we're waiting on before we can announce a grand opening date, so that we can serve beer on day one. And the moment that we have that in, we'll be getting in contact with all of City Council to be involved with the soft opening that we're planning, that will include all of you, our investors, and some of our longtime regulars from up in Fairmont. We're going to haul them down here to fill the place up so that we look popular. But we really appreciate all the assistance that the city has given us, and especially CJ, he's even spent some time down in there working. I didn't even know he owned a button-up shirt, so I'm pretty impressed now. But. What's that? That's right. And we could see one of our coffee mugs up on the table there. That makes us happy. But yeah, so Courtney, did you want to address or say anything?
Hi.
She's also our city muralist, you know, so yeah.
That's what we heard.
We're Wesleyan, mom. We're very Wesleyan.
We're going to have her do a little bureau of our logo inside on the wood wall, if anybody's seen the wood wall inside. She's going to be doing that for us. And other than that, we just hope she quits injuring herself while cleaning. She.
I'm like a mummy now.
She's using up all of our Band-Aids. The Band-Aid budget's blown. But yeah, so we're really excited, and we appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the community, and we're going to have a great time at the soft opening. Like I said, as soon as we get that license, we'll be letting you guys know so that we can serve you guys plenty of beer.
Rob, we're excited to have you. We've been excited since you made the announcement last fall, and people ask me literally almost every day, somebody will say, "Hey, you know anything about, when's that place open?" Pretty soon, you know? That's been, I've been saying that for a few weeks, pretty soon.
That's what I've been saying too. But it's a waiting game when it comes to the paperwork side.
Sure.
But we have it all done, so we're in that final phase. And if anybody wants to stop by this weekend, I'll be down there doing some more painting Saturday and Sunday. But any other day of the week, you're going to find James and Courtney will probably be down there, and a lot of times on the weekends, James comes down too.
Yep.
So we can make sure I don't do anything completely wrong, so.
We're thrilled about it. Thank you goodness.
But thank you.
We'll look forward to the official opening here.
We are too. And like I said, we can't thank the community enough for the support that they're already giving us, both in person and online. It's really great.
Great addition to our doctor.
Thank you.
Coffee shop is a core necessity in a downtown, and I think you filling that, you know, and being open Sunday too, right?
We'll be open Sundays.
So that's a, that's going to be a big plus.
Seven to nine, seven to 10, are those the hours again? Seven AM to?
It'll be roughly in there. We're going to try, within the first couple of weeks, to try to gauge about when everybody in the area is heading to work, so that we can try to be open, so that people can stop on the way to work.
Sure.
And then generally in the evenings, it's a little bit earlier during the week, and then later Friday, Saturday, you know, for the beer side, so. But generally, it's no, we don't close any earlier than probably nine at the earliest. But it really all depends on traffic, and we're hoping to have plenty of traffic, so come on down, make us stay open later.
And for the craft beer connoisseurs, I'm told that you're going to carry, you've got some, what, Mountain State, Big Timber, Short Story, Parkersburg Brewery, you're going to carry all the vicsies in West Virginia.
That's right. We actually have a tap tower with 14 taps installed.
Wow.
So it's a beautiful thing. It's amazing. I sit there and dream about when beer comes out. We have two taps that are going to be dedicated towards cold brew, which we make out of our own coffee. One is going to be straight cold brew, one's going to be nitro cold brew. If you haven't tried nitro cold brew, I highly recommend it. It's smooth and creamy. It's amazing. So that leaves us with 12 taps for beer. Six of them will always be West Virginia craft beer. Six of them are dedicated to West Virginia craft beer, and they'll rotate out from all of the breweries that distribute in the state. We'll be getting beer from all of them. The other six will be for national craft brands, or sometimes we'll carry ciders and those sort of things as well. But like I said, six will always be for locals, for your stump towns, for your Big Timbers, for all those guys. We have a great relationship with all of them. We love working with all of them in our current shop, and we're going to keep doing the same.
Fantastic. We're thrilled to have you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll have you back again soon.
Excellent. Enjoy your meeting.
Thank you. Next up is Mandy Neely, who has brought some folks, youngsters, to see us from Flag, which stands for Foreign Links Around the Globe.
That's right.
And Mandy, you want to tell us about your group?
Sure. Thanks for having us this evening. I am Mandy Neely, and I am the Enhancement Activities Director. Actually, I have Lynette Robey with us this evening, and she's the one who does all of the legwork with getting our students placed through Flag. She has students placed here in Buchanan. There's several over, and we have some over in Weston. And if you're interested in being a host family, we're always looking for more, always looking for more. Flag is a nonprofit group, and we have students that we host from 51 countries around the world, and usually about 500 students every year, and they're on, they're here on like a scholarship sort of basis. For the Enhancement Activity section of Flag, there are four pillars that each student must complete to maintain their scholarship. So one of those is government. They have to investigate how emergency personnel and responders work at the community level and how they communicate, as well with the state level during natural disasters and things of a greater nature. They also have to do a free market pillar, where they examine the economy in our area. We are focusing actually on looking at how small businesses are able to thrive without being necessarily a chain store, and how even with not very much television commercials and whatnot, we're working with that word of mouth and building that relationship within the community. So we're really happy about that upcoming activity. We also have a diversity pillar that students are required to complete, so we're working on that. And the leadership pillar, which is why we are here this evening, part of our pillar for leadership is to attend a City Council meeting, so that they can see how local government works in comparison to their home countries. And they had to do a little bit of homework before we even came this evening, so they looked at how City Councils are ran around the nation, and how they did here in Buchanan. They had to prepare some questions, so perhaps afterwards, if you have a few moments, if you could indulge us a little bit.
Sure.
And they've really enjoyed their time here in Buchanan. It's definitely been an eye-opening experience for me. I do not host one of the students personally. However, Lynette Robey has been a friend of our families for years, and we have seen the great impact that it has had on her family, and not just with her siblings, but how they have viewed the world, and how it has been able to change the way that they see things just here in our little pocket in Upsher County, and understand things on a more global basis. So we're really excited to have our three girls with us this evening. So we have Ally with us, we have Yara, and we have Veronica. And Veronica is from Ukraine, and Yara is from Kazakhstan?
Kazakhstan.
Kazakhstan. And Ally, you are from Romania. Right, so it's been very interesting to learn about their countries as well. We have, Veronica is actually in placement with Jeremiah Smallrich.
Oh, wow.
And she has kind of submerged herself in with band, and she's doing choir. I believe that she's involved in a lot of things up there. I know Yara was doing volleyball, and track now, correct? Track now.
I'm also doing track.
Huh? You are doing track. I can't keep track of all of you, plus the four of my own that I have, my own four kids. And Ally is involved in many things as well. Ally's doing choir, and are you doing track?
No, I'm doing tennis.
Oh, tennis.
I know that tennis coach. That's my wife.
I figured I was, so I was researching some, like she said, to do some homework, and I read a little about the City Council, and I was like, I wonder.
They are a really great group of kids. Veronica and Yara recently attended an Enhancement Activity at Adrian Fire Department, the volunteer fire department out there, and Chief Pirlo was very welcoming, and the girls were able to turn on all of the equipment. They had the oxygen masks hooked up, and you know, I was thinking, oh, this is going to be rough for them, and instead they asked if they could do laps. Like, you're training for track. Look at that. So it was a really great experience. And yes, if you don't mind, towards the end, if we could indulge you just for a moment.
Well, before that, last year, we recognized all of the international exchange students, and there were 10 or 11 of them.
Yes.
The next thing I know, I'm friends with parents of kids from all over the globe.
Right.
And I know how big of a deal that is, especially for the parents back home in various places. So if you'd like to come up front, we could get a picture with the city seal on the back.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
I've got a question for Andy. Andy, what age in Maryland is with Flag, and what's the likelihood of staying with this family?
Well, that really varies. Usually, we're looking at students who are between 15 and 17 years old. Stays can be usually about one school year is what we look at. Lynette is actually the pro on all of that information. I'm just the one that gets to go and hang out with the kids and have a whole bunch of fun.
Mandy and Lynette, come on up and get in the picture.
Lynette, what are our, I know normally we have students in placement from August at the very beginning of the school year, and then some of you, I think, you're leaving early, aren't you? May 14. And then some of us, Lynette?
Yeah, we, it's usually a week before school starts, and about two weeks after. We did get one student this year that came back January, so it's our first student we've had that's going to come from January to January, which a lot of students have asked, they'd love to experience the Fourth of July in America, but they go back right after school. So this new student that we have, so he'll be here from January to June.
Awesome. Please come up and join us.
I'm trying to facilitate the gal that stayed with us last year, Zanagor.
Yeah. So she left.
Yeah, she's trying to get to Wesleyan.
Yeah.
Thanks, ladies. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
And we'll be happy to answer any questions you have as we get through the.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next guest, who really needs no introduction, is Kathy Gregg, who is Professor Emeritus of Biology up at Wesleyan. Kathy and I talked a few weeks back, Ecuador, where was it?
I was in Ecuador.
Ecuador, yeah. That's a tough gig, right? Yeah, in the rainforest of Ecuador. She asked about, she has prepared a history of our learning trail, which, you know, is immediately adjacent and abuts, the river trail. And what's it been, three or four years since we dedicated that thing already? Don't blink, right?
Well, if you want to know, the answer's in this book.
It's in the book.
People like me are going to forget.
Well, she was going to present it to the city, and I, you know, if it's a historical document, it would make sense for Noel Tenney, on behalf of the Historic Society, to come here and receive this. So do you want to tell us a little bit about your effort, and then we'll get it started off if you would know.
Okay. I love to do shut-off my books, and I just sometimes, all of a sudden, have a light bulb and say, I want to do one about this, and I decided I wanted to do one about the nature park, because I had been involved in it sort of from the beginning, although Jerry really is the guy who started it, right? You and your buddies, yes, because I think they wrote the original grant. But anyway, I had this light bulb and decided I would make myself a shut-off my book just for myself, so I would enjoy some of the pictures I had taken over the last three years. And one of my friends saw my book and said, why don't you give one to the city? I said, oh, okay. And then I realized I didn't have any details in my personal book, like people's names and things like that. So I made this one with more details, so that if somebody wants to know, when was the dedication, you just open it up, and there's all the pictures of the dedication. And it was September 2014.
2014, okay.
The grant that Jerry had a lot to do with was written in 2009, and I have a few excerpts in here from the grant, just so you can see what sorts of things they were interested in doing, and then you can make your own judgment about whether we actually accomplished those things. I think we did. And so anyway, I'm here to just tell you about the nature park again and invite you to come visit it. I have a crew of volunteers who help me keep it weeded. There's a lot of exotic invasive species that keep coming in, and we want to try to maintain it as a native garden primarily. So if you're, anybody in here is interested in volunteering to help pull weeds, it can be very satisfying. I'll be happy to put you to work, but right now, I just want to make this presentation to Noel Tenney.
Can we come up front and let Katie and Sarah earn their keepings, all right? Jerry Arnold, please join us. Jerry, please join us up front. Can we buy this book? Is it, you know, is it available for purchase?
I suppose I could order a bunch of them. It's still, you know, the plans are still online. I could go in there and order them.
I'd like to order a few copies.
Created yourself, right? Yeah. Yeah.
You guys can hand the book off, and we'll just look pretty, right, Jerry? You guys can hand the book off, and we'll just look pretty, right, Jerry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Appreciate your great work.
Make a remark.
You got it. I appreciate your hand. I'll get out of the way. You guys can talk.
Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to thank you on behalf of the Upsher County Historical Society for presenting this. You know, a lot of people don't know much about the Upsher County Historical Society. We've only been here since 1925. So, if you have not met up with us someplace along the line, now's the time to meet up with us. We have three facilities that we operate in Upsher County. And the one that this document will go into is our document repository, and we're located right across from the courthouse at 29 West Main Street. And if you don't think we have much, sometime come by and look. We have, we are the caretakers of more than 500 collections, and we have cataloged over 20,000 artifacts, original artifacts, documents, photographs, and we have that many more to catalog. Plus, we have that many more just in research documents. So, if anybody's looking to find information about, just about any aspect of Upsher County's and Buchanan's history, the repository is the place to come to, whether it be Parlorence. And by the way, you probably left Parlorence, because we have all of that in our collection.
How about this one? You got this one, too?
Yes, we do.
You got both of them?
We do. We have all. And we have each films, and we also have the information that you left out of your plaque, which was his text.
Couldn't possibly have left anything out of that plaque.
Tell them they had to cut the work out.
His text for the river, for the river film was published two years after the film was produced as a book, and it was nominated for a Pulitzer Prize. It did not win that year in 1938, but it was nominated. We have had Pulitzer Prize winners from Upsher County before, and that's another story.
So, the book was written?
Also, the Upsher County Historical maintains the museum, History Center Museum, at 81 West Main Street in the oldest extant building on Main Street, the historic Southern Methodist Church Building. And that is a summer seasonal program, so you'll want to come and see what we do there. The repository, we're open to the public every Tuesday evening, and we'll leave there because we're doing some mini exhibits at the repository. And the first one are painters, and I believe your mother-in-law is going to be featured in that one, too. So, we also maintain the Historic Presbyterian Church Building in French Creek. And that one's the one that we're working on now, and soon, it will be hopefully available for different kinds of activities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Noel.
And thank you, Kathy, for all your work on this. We appreciate all the efforts to preserve Upsher County's history, whether it's today's, yesterday's, or 100 years ago.
Let's get together on lunch, and we'll get those Pulitzer votes. Okay, next up is Matt. I'm going to call upon our police chief, Matt Gregory. We have some exciting news that we're going to act on under strategic business, but you're going to make some introductions of guests first, Matt?
Actually, with me tonight is Deputy Kerry with the Lewis County Sheriff Department. And of course, we have Lieutenant Martin tagging along. Sheriff Kaufman was supposed to be here tonight, this was Sheriff Kessie, but they had some things come up. So, I'll talk more about the issue.
We'll wait and talk more about this when we drop down to strategic, and maybe we can incorporate that at the tail end of your report, so that we don't keep everybody here. So, okay, thank you. And our last guest of the night, last but not least, Rob Benton, the Director of the Upsher County Development Authority. Rob?
I feel like the font for your council meeting is small. It never goes in two pages. It's like a resume, right? The glasses need to be strengthened. She said she had an extra pair of glasses if she needs them. Oh. Oh, sorry. So, thank you for putting me on the agenda and having me as a guest. I appreciate that. And we'll take up too much time. And wanted to, wanted to just kind of give a appreciation for Callie making time to come down and visit with me at the development office last week. And we talked through a lot of projects that she has going on and her, along her vision, and a lot of projects that we have going on in Development Authority. And it was a very, very good meeting, kind of collaboration of ideas and efforts, and kind of led to, you know, coming down here and talking about the opportunity zone. So, I want to appreciate that, and also appreciate your all's letter of support for the proposal for the opportunity zone. So, just to first go over, the opportunity zones was something that came up really quickly. Really, to be honest with you, I don't think it was advertised enough. You know, I found out about it with about two weeks, about two-week window before they were due on the 20th or last week, on the 6th or 7th, on the 7th. And what an opportunity zone is, is it's a result of the passage of the Investing in Opportunity Act. It will allow low-income census tracts eligible to use tax incentives to encourage long-term investment in assets and property. It's going to be similar to new market tax credits. New market tax credit is a funding mechanism that, there are two census tracts in Upsher County that are eligible for new market tax credit investment. How new market tax credit investment works is, let's say you have a $10 million project. New market tax credits can come in. A lending institution has new market tax credits that were awarded from the Treasury. They would sell roughly 30% of the $10 million, so $3 million in tax credits. That would then use the proceeds from the sale of those tax credits to make the investment $10 million, and you have to come up with seven. Typically, new market tax credits can be a payback on loan, low interest rate, 1% to 2%. Or depending on which CDFI or CDE that you're working with, that's a financial institution, they possibly could be forgiven. So, you could build a $10 million facility for $7 million. So, it's obviously, that is a very, very, very attractive incentive. So, from a standpoint of what opportunity zones are going to have, we have 250 new market tax credit eligible census tracts based on low income. That's where poverty rate is, 20% or more of the population is at or below the poverty rate. So, what opportunity zone's going to do is we're going to take new market tax credit eligible census tracts of 250, and it's going to drop those down by 20 to 25% of 250, or roughly, what was that, be 65? I don't know. Yes? Who wants to get a calculator out, right? Go with that. 65 census tracts. So, you're going to have a more concentrated, I guess, a more opportunistic availability if you can achieve becoming an opportunity zone. Now, the Treasury and the Act passed on the selection and appointment of opportunity zones onto the governor of the state or executives of the territories included in this as well. And that is what the proposal was for. So, in doing this, we have two eligible new market tax credit census tracts. We wanted to make sure that those census tracts were prioritized as one and two. So, there's a map here that I put together, and you can see they're numbered, and you can see the outline of the census tract one is kind of your downtown district, Main Street area, kind of what you would call downtown proper. And number two covers over where our industrial side of Corridor H, and then, a large swath of what would be probably mostly residential south of Corridor H. So, those were priority one and priority two, because we could only get 25% of the 250 of those census tracts. We wanted to make sure that we at least could get those census tracts in. Now, we're going to go and try to be a little bit more aggressive and more greedy. We're going to try and get contiguous tracts as well. So, they can always tell us no, and, right, you don't get anything if you don't ask. And so, what we did was we looked at what would be the opportunity, no pun intended, what would be the opportunity to get an opportunity zone and a contiguous tract next to one and two tracts? So, we looked at it, and in looking at the most recent investment that's going to occur at the old Armory, where it's going to be a pharmaceutical manufacturing company, and they are already securing private equity investment, it will make for a good argument because new, or opportunity zone will have equity investment arms to the options of what will be available. But the governor does want to see if there's actually that type of business attracting equity investments already currently, because that makes a case that they're probably going to need either more or attract other businesses that would likely be equity investment. Not all businesses are equity investment attractable. So, we had that as three, and then, obviously, the large geographic area, which would encapsulate the remaining area from Buchanan east, no, we're going the wrong way, west towards Lewis County, along the corridor, both north and south. So, there's some developable sites that are definitely over there. The big key one is, obviously, you have the airport there. So, the airport's always looking for opportunities for investments, just like anyone else. So, if there's an incentive that we could have available by being a part of the opportunity zone over there, it might make things a little bit, a little bit more attractive. So, I don't have an answer for you. The only answer I have is the last update I received from Commerce is, the Department of Commerce is the one leading this effort. So, they're going to make their recommendations to governors, and they're vetting these. We do have a really good relationship with the Department of Commerce, so we're hoping that that will play into our proposal. They filed for a 30-day extension, so you have until March 21st, if the governor makes his recommendation to this Treasury, or you file for a 30-day extension by March 21st. They've already filed for a 30-day extension. So, we're going to string this out till April 21st and see what happens. So, that's the short and sweet of it.
I think it sounds great. I mean, it sounds like an opportunity. To attract investment. I mean, if you got 30% basically forgiven, then that's a heck of an argument right there.
Well, anytime you can, you can make a capital investment at 70 cents on the dollar, your profit margin, your payback, your return on investment, it just becomes one more tool in the toolbox for us to recruit outside investments to come in here that would create jobs.
Question. Could they, could they also jump upon the enterprise zone that we have created for additional savings, possibly?
Yes.
So, as, if the opportunity poses itself, Buchanan would be the best place for somebody to come, because not only would they be looking at the 70 cents on the dollar, but we could save them maybe another 10, 15% of our enterprise zone, so.
Yep.
Gives you another card to play.
Any incentive is a good incentive, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would we have to do additional zoning changes?
No. No, our enterprise zone has nothing to do with zoning. It's not a geographical thing.
Business, city limits, right?
Yeah, just within the corporate limits.
Do you have a jobs number for the pharmaceutical company?
Initially, they have a goal of, in the first year, about 20.
Wow.
So, and, you know, I would, you know, coming out of my skin here, because I want to announce it. I have a couple of things that I want to announce. However, I respect to the company, they're not ready to announce, and let them drive that decision. But it is, I believe it's extremely transformational for the area. It is, it is an industry we don't have. It's an emerging industry. Currently, the industry domestically is about $400 million. It is expected by 2021 to grow to about $5.5 billion. So, there's definitely a growth opportunity in that market. So, it's, it's something that definitely, I have very high expectations for, so hopefully they do well there, and I think they will.
Is there anything you need from us to make this happen, or are you just reporting on your work and collaboration with Callie?
Yeah.
The letter of support's in your pocket.
Oh.
The letter of scenes, right? Yeah. But transparently behind this. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Please keep us posted.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Rob.
Takes us down to department and board reports, and boy, the deck got a little shuffled here. Callie Crennan-Sams is our information coordinator and grant writer researcher. Callie?
Been so long since I saw you.
Few hours.
Yeah, two hours ago.
We're all getting mean, and I have my report in your pocket. But I thank Rob for coming in this evening. We did have a nice meeting and talked about some projects that the UCDA is working on, as well as the city, and areas we might be able to collaborate in, different funding opportunities. And I think the opportunity zone would be great if we get on that list, like you had said, one more tool in the toolbox, so can't hurt to be on that list of eligible, so to speak. So, I have that listed here, but he'd already gave you a pretty good briefing on that, so I won't talk more about the opportunity zone. I'll hop on down to website, Social Media Plus releases. This coming Tuesday, maybe have had a chance to hear or see the flyer about the celebration of spring that we're having at Jawbone Park. 4:30 PM was the original start time, but we have Adam Muir, and has asked that he could be there at 4:00 even, so we might start at 4:00 with a little bit of music prior to our celebration with French Creek Friday. And we also have the Buchanan Community Gardens, who will be there and doing some planting with the kids. They'll be able to take those seeds home with them. Also, the Buchanan Community Theater, we found out it's also World Storytelling Day. So, they're going to be reading a story about brown hogs, and you've got to keep the theme all together, right? And we're going to have some folks there from the libraries, as well as the Southern Upsher County Business Association, talk about what they have going on down in the southern part of the county. We have the band, Any Corner, will be there as well, and doing a performance of their original hit, "Are You Ready for French Creek Friday." So, I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I've been looking at the weather forecast. It might be a little bit chilly. I'm hoping that Sunday's weather forecast becomes Tuesday's forecast, but I think, as long as it's not, you know, blizzard conditions or anything too extreme, we'll be at Jawbone Park, so bundle up. And the folks from Stocker Youth Center, the after-school club, will be there, and we're looking forward to just having a good time down at Jawbone and getting ready for the spring and summer seasons. So, I think you have this in your pocket. There's also a few more at the door, if anyone here would like to pick one up on their way out, on this coming Tuesday. And then, you may have seen coverage also of the Victoria Hill Water Paint. We had that ribbon cutting, and we've got some media coverage there, thank you. And also have that information up on the website, shared it on Facebook, same with the flyer. Another, the police department is accepting applications now for that entry-level officer position, so that's up on the web. It's been shared on Facebook. So, that is out there, and hopefully, we'll get some applicants coming in. Natalie has been doing a great job. She continues to be really hard at work. Right now, she's been focusing in on Stocker's website and getting that up to date, and has been working with Michaela over at Stocker, as well as April and Deborah. And I think she's doing a great job there. Let's see. She's also worked with Noel Tenney a little bit to see if we could get that historical tour into a digital format, so she's been working on that as well. Dropping down to grants, I met with Shane Whitehair and Carrie Smith at the Region 7 Development Council, and had a good discussion with them about different funding opportunities that we might be exploring. Tomorrow is the deadline to keep you on that fire safety, community risk assessment, so be submitting that in the morning. I'm just waiting for any last comments. I've sent out my final, or close to my final. Development Council and had a good discussion with them about different funding opportunities that we might be exploring. Tomorrow is the deadline to keep you on that fire safety community risk assessment, so be submitting that in the morning. I'm just waiting for any last comments. I've sent out my final or close to final draft for any last comments on that and then we'll have that submitted tomorrow morning. Looking into using a re litter control grant perhaps to be able to demolish some abandoned buildings or dilapidated buildings, that sort of thing. So that's another one that's coming up that we'd like to get an application in. I don't have, at this point, these are just in the future, I don't have a proposal for you to look at tonight, but that's one I hope to have to you soon, possibly next meeting. And then I just kind of have a list of some others that I've been researching and exploring and I don't necessarily know that we want to go into all of those tonight since you have such a full agenda. So I'll drop down to the events unless you have questions about any of them, I'd be happy to talk about them, of course. Tomorrow, there's an Appalachian Forest Heritage Area annual meeting and if everything goes smoothly with the fire grant, I'm going to try and make an appearance there because they do have AmeriCorps site placements and we are a part of that forest heritage area, I believe. I don't remember the number of counties and I believe it's about 12. So we might be able to use that as another way to highlight Buchanan and Upsher County. I think we've had some participation with them in the past, but we might even be able to amp that up a little bit. Of course, this weekend, we'll have the spelling bee on Sunday, the Upsher Arts Alliance Spelling Bee, participating in that. Tuesday, I already mentioned our first day of spring celebration at Jawbone. And on the 22nd on Thursday is, of course, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner, looking forward to that. And finally, March 29th, we'll have the Make It Shine proclamation with the Upsher County Solid Waste Authorities. So looking forward to April and Make It Shine months here in Upsher County and the city. So I tried to do that fairly quickly, but if you want me to go back over anything or have any questions.
What day of the week is March 18th for the spelling bee?
Sunday. It's at 3:00 PM, I believe.
Did you get changed or something?
It would.
Twice, yeah.
Yeah, well, there you go.
I got the boot.
I got the boot.
Yeah, the Armory had something for the USFPL.
I think I'm an alternate on our team, is that correct Pam? Otherwise, I'll be taking pictures.
I'm not going to be able to do that.
You're not going to be able to do that?
I'm a lawyer.
All right, I'm on the team.
Thank you, Callie.
Callie, pushing three months into your tenure now in this position, did you, yeah, it seems like more like three years, right? Did you think back in November, December that as this evolved, that you would, that there was that much going on in Buchanan?
Short answer, no. But it's been great. Like I'm learning so much. I didn't know that there was this much going on, but I'm happy to learn that there's even more than what I realized going on. And I think everyone here at council and also staff here with the city, it's just, it's amazing how much, you know, how many balls are in the air and it's all progressing forward and I think all in a positive light, to be honest. So it's really been really fulfilling for me to be able to work, you know, from my hometown, this is where I'm from and have been enjoying it, but it's definitely keeping me busy. I like your back.
We're thrilled to have you.
Yeah. And I like the fact that she reaches out to bring us, we go into the county and then the county comes, we just work together, evolve together. I like that.
It's been a good match.
Yeah, it has.
Questions for Callie? Thank you, Callie. Say hey to Nathan and Willow for us. Okay, next up is Deborah Brockerman representing the Stocker Youth Center.
You have my report in your pocket, but I'll just highlight what we've been doing at Stocker. Programs and activities going very well, we're very, very busy. During the work stoppage, we had open gym every day and we were also a site for the gravel mills, which were donated from various places, teachers, churches and community members for the kids. Our basketball season ended with our championship games a week ago. This year, we had 360 players including our little buddies and our cheerleaders. We had 64 volunteer coaches and 20 high school players helping as refs and scorekeepers. Our drill team is practicing every Thursday now, they're getting ready for our parade season. Their first parade will be the Strawberry Festival and we have quite a few new girls and older girls, so they're doing fundraising for their new dresses because we're out of those sizes. Our fitness programs are going very well the past couple of months. We have a few new instructors. Sherry Ekel joins us as our yoga instructor now and her classes are on Wednesday. Lanny Hire joins us as our new zumba instructor and she does her thing on Mondays. We had a S Y C night at the girls' home game a couple of weeks ago before they went to state. And at the end of the night, the girls donated their half of the 50/50 drawing back to Stocker for our new building campaign. And also the athletic department donated $300 to our campaign as well. They've been very supportive of the youth center. Also, our fundee page is still up. We've received $970 from them and we've also been selling our T-shirts to promote our new facility and we've profited about $1,400 so far from that. And during our basketball games, we were also doing 50/50 tickets and all of those funds went into our capital campaign as well. We are still planning some fundraisers. A big fundraiser that we're planning is an elimination dinner and that will be probably early fall. We're getting a lot of advice about how to plan it and because we've never done one before. So we're getting all our ducks in a row. Also, in the spring, we're planning to have a 5K highlighter run and a telethon and we're still in the early stages of doing that. And for the month of February, we had 12,760 youth involvement.
Wow. That's a lot of volunteers.
It is.
Questions for Deborah? Thanks, Deborah. We're going to, we'll pedal our auditorium gymnasium project at every turn. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next board report would be Jerry Arnold, our Public Works Director. Jerry?
I've got handouts.
Wow. You're not going to be upstaged.
Can you listen to your voice?
The color, it's actually in there, but I wanted you to have colored pictures of the trees on Main Street. The name, which wasn't printed on this flyer, but the name of the trees, they're streetkeeper honey locusts, which are, they're a formless tree. And again, Robbie Barber, Robbie Barber selected these trees because of their resistance to salt spraying chemicals and hardiness plus their growth rate.
What was the name of the tree?
Streetkeeper honey locust. They are, in the fall, they have a yellow foliage on them. I think they're really pretty downtown. And really, the leaves on them, I wanted to get a close-up on their leaves because the leaves are a different type of leaf. So.
How long will they be able to stay in that confined bracket?
Well, again, these mature sizes are 45 feet to 18 to 20 feet wide in 50 years. So there's a, they get to that mid-range fairly quickly and the growth rate slows on them. So I would anticipate another 15, 20 years, CJ, if you're just asking.
The governor's for me.
But again, the trees that we removed, and I've got that on down in my report, but the trees that we removed, once we started removing them, were extremely root bound, as you can imagine. The length of time they were in there, they were bound between themselves and that was the hardest part was the separation of those. We were able to remove them all without damaging the planters except for the one planter there on the corner. There were little jewelery. We did crack that planter, taken that tree out. Most of the trees, one tree snapped, the trunk snapped, just trying to lift them. Most of the other trees, we did get some root balls on, however, we had thought about planting or trying to replant those where we're taking the pines out down along the walk trail. But one of the problems we thought we would have with that is staking to the side because they are, those trees are very close to the walk trail. So we rethought that and we'll be replanting them and attempting to save them out of our waste complex in front of the fence, in between the fence and the highway there. And then we'll be placing some two to three-inch caliper trees down along the walk trails and some shade trees, all for shade on that side. So just wanted to let everybody know what we're doing with the trees on Main Street. First of all, before I get into my report, I just want, because there's a couple of things that developed over today and the day before. But I want first of all to say that we, and we being the city of Buchanan, work hand-in-hand with the Department of Highway. We share in the responsibilities on a lot of our city streets, our combined city streets as well as state routes and we have very good relationships with most of the folks that work for the Department of Highway. That being said, I was informed by Laura Metta's that the permit supervisor, Gary Weaver with the DOH, denied a permit for the Westland banner being installed for their, and actually this is a typo, the Homecoming banner was approved, but the Open House banners were denied.
But it's the same banner, right?
It is the same exact banner, yes, sir. And I'll be contacting Gary to see just what the issue is there. But again, I just want to bring counsel up to speed with some of these things that are taking place. Also, today Vincent Smith received a call from Tom Rise with the DOH. Mr. Rise informed Vince that the light pole banners on Main Street were considered off-site signage and needed to be removed from the DOH right away. And I've got a call into Mr. Rise. The city's maintained those light poles and installed banners on them for the past 28 years and we've not had issue. These particular banners that he is referring to are the Buchanan-Upsher banners that were sponsored by groups, businesses. I believe Wendy's is on one, I think Robbie's insurance agency is on one. But we were notified just today of that and I've got phone calls into several folks and trying to get clarification on what we need to do or what the steps are. But again, I just want to make counsel aware that that has come up.
How many years have they been?
28. 28 years.
Is he the owner of the position?
I do not know him, Dave. I don't know that, you know, how long.
Is he out of here or is he out of Charles?
Out of Charles, that's what I'm getting at.
You would think we'd have some autonomy in the city to do things like this. These aren't.
Especially because it's, I mean, okay, it's a state highway, but it really isn't. I mean, you know, on a technical base it is, but I mean, if you came into this town and you weren't from here, there is no signage downtown that says this is State Highway this until you get right down here at 151 that goes over here. Other than that, I know it's treated as a state highway and it technically is on the books, but it, it's not Route 20 and it's not US 33. I mean, it's, I mean, it should be levels.
Again, we cooperate very well with the DOH and I just want to stress that, but this is very upsetting to me. It will be us the ones that may have to remove our light pole banners.
Well, what example?
Well, let me put it this way, you don't have to remove them until the judge tells you have to remove them.
And that's, I think that's the position you take.
Absolutely.
Doug Gold, who's the ADA compliance officer that lives over in Weston and is over the whole state with eight, he came over and spent three or four hours with us walking every corner and, okay, here's what we do here, here's what we do there. And like two weeks later, we get $160,000 grant to fix the 16 intersect points downtown. That's public service. Doug Gold, great guy. But like any organization, there's always people that are overextending what they should be doing and stuff like that. We'll get this worked out.
Yeah, sure will. I'm working on a memorandum of understanding to obtain property along Milton Lane as part of the Traders Alley project. As you all know, part of our alley right away, Milton Lane, has been paved on private property, so we're trying to get that section of property for our rightway. Also, executive proposal for Precision Safe Sidewalks, you remember the company, but I mentioned to you that we're doing a test section of Buchanan on our sidewalks. They, the proposal was to eliminate or remove 110 identified trip hazards on sidewalks on North Florida Street, Cleveland Avenue, First Street, Meat Street, and they'll be completing the work by the middle of April and then do a hazard assessment on the remainder of all of our sidewalks in Buchanan. And those hazards range from a quarter inch to two and a half inches. And they went through, the GPS pointed every one of them. Also, once the trip hazards are removed, that map also shows sections or segments that's broken up that we need to repair or replace. And we were already doing a project on North Florida Street, so this will actually take away some of the sidewalk that we were going to have to demo and replace. They are a green company and the other part of it that I really liked is it eliminates a lot of the waste product, as you can imagine, because they're just repairing what's there as opposed to demoing what's there and recording it. So I've got the full proposal and I'll put it in council packet next time so you can review. It has all the pictures and all the identified hazards and how they went through the process and all our information. So we're going to give them a try and see how it works out. And again, we'll get a full assessment of the rest of our sidewalks again. Be working with the supervisors to establish an equipment usage assessment and create a database. We can better evaluate equipment purchase and minimize damage caused. You remember, back last year, I said that we were going to start on this, kind of the rental equipment kind of thing in-house and just come back up to the forefront to evaluate not just, we have, AMI has all the equipment inventories for insurance purposes, but I want to go further and identify the actual usage hours on all of our equipment. And then what that can do for us is we can do combined purchases between departments, you know, shared purchases on equipment and that lessens the maintenance responsibility on every individual department to do that. So we're doing that somewhat, sharing equipment between departments right now. One example is our, what we call the HO RAM, it's a RAM on the back of the back of, that piece of equipment was joint purchased with Water Streets and Waste of the Week. And we currently share that piece of equipment, it's housed in Water, but as Street needs it on sidewalk demolition or whatever, someone goes up against that piece of equipment, we utilize it. So that's being done partially, but this is just more of the documentation and an overall review of our equipment. I've been contacted by Thrasher Engineering, they need to perform some additional environmental testing for the Innovation Center site. They'll be in there, as you know, there's some monitoring wells on the site. They will be drilling two test holes on the north side of Main Street. There's a monitoring well in the sidewalk on the north side. There's also one on the 20th. Next week, they'll be doing this, drilling to those two test holes for soil samples. And again, they drill a hole, once they take their soil sample, they compact it, the soil back in and then in this case, they'll be putting concrete back in the small test hole they drilled. Then on the 27th, they'll be pulling tests from the monitoring well on North Spring Street and that is right up near the intersection over towards the parking area. It's right at the end of the yellow there, there's a yellow on the handicap spot right there. It's right in that area. So there will be, we will have to block that section off three to four hours, is what they're saying that they'll be pulling. And again, that's pulling air samples from that well. Water Department, they've been working with a contractor on the Third Lane project. The shaft at the sediment basin's been repaired and they're working on North Florida Street service relocations. service relocations. Sewer Department sent comments for the DP, NPDS permit, draft permit, sent EPA report on biosolids, attended lieutenant PSC, board meeting to express extraneous flow concerns. Projects in progress is Wood Street Sewer Project Phase Two, task completed, collateral to serve Dr. Duran Building, 120 to six inch SBR 35, a tap at 172 Hold Brooks, and Road and Huff Alley's been completed. The Waste Department, the teters, a lot of the teter's been delivered inside to the city moments, and again, I was just in a meeting with the waste collection today with the drivers, and where they've been delivered, ample ground's been delivered, the Rennie Hall's trailer poured out on the Western Road, those drivers are already seeing. The, it's speeding their times up, and it is making it much easier for them to pick up or collect garbage. So, just what's been delivered, and again, if you've been out to the transfer station site and seen all these teter cans on the lot, we have just scratched the surface of delivering these things. It's a pretty big undertaking, but the guys have been doing it. As the trucks get down in the evenings, they've been delivering, we've had them volunteer, and of course with the weather, as weather permits, to go out on weekends and deliver the things. So, we are making progress, hope to be, next couple of weeks, get an accounting, get some of these things out, but they are working the way we want them to work.
Jerry, can I interrupt that one quickie? If we have ours already, can we put it out?
Well, absolutely. Encourage, encourage you to use them, yes. Okay, absolutely. On the Street Department, we are still accepting applications for park attendant position. Been catching up on some of the stump grinding around town, we've had several trees over the past couple of years that we've had to move, we're trying to get the stump grinding completed. Continuing to patch holes as weather permits, continuing to try to work on North Florida Street. Again, I've already covered the Main Street trees. Engineering, Jay's working on the local flood control project, anticipates resuming work on the dead, the station to be removed with bid specs in the spring 18, and it's, he's currently on hold on that project right now. CSX water line replacement, as you remember, he's requesting a partial or full refund, although we were unable to make that bore underneath of the road tracks out near the overpass on the Western Road. He's working on that. The FEMA generator has mitigation grant, program application one submitted, addressing additional information request number two regarding revised application form, application number one's revision, her revised application form has been completed and approved, and working on the application two, just to have submitted by March 19th. The Water Department early warning monitoring system phase one, the bid open was held March 7th to 18th, only one bid was received, the bid came in at $114,552, which was $27,052 over the projected budget for that. The Water Board wants to reject the bid, and Jay's currently in discussion with the West Virginia DHHR to determine the Water Department's options and possible time extensions on that. The ACP Water System Improvements Project, working on the Water System Improvement Right Away Map, using the special property owner along Route 20 North, Leggett Edition, the Old Western Road, Rushmore Road, regarding possible easements and rightaways. The DOH is now allowing the new water line to be installed within the DOH existing rightway. Kelly and Jay will begin making site visits to the property owner beginning next week, depending on contract one, Route 20 North and Leggett Edition Road, and the Old Western Road is currently out to bid. Bid open for contract one is scheduled for April 3rd, 2018, on 1/30. And again, you'll remember, there's about three designs on, because part of that water line has to go through the federal highways rightaway, Route 33. And there's the consulting engineers submitted three different permit, three different designs in access in Leggett Edition. The most preferred was to go along the east side of Route 20, through under the underpass, and do a bore underneath of Route 20 North to Leggett Edition, and that would afford us to, at a later time, to upgrade our water line out on Morton Avenue and do a conjoined project of water line and sidewalks along Morton Avenue. However, they've expressed some concerns from the federal highways about being, digging that close to their embuppance to the overpass. So, long story short, like I said, the consulting engineers submitted three different designs, and whatever permit they approve, that's where we're going with it. We put the project out, we had to because of timeframe, project's out of bid, and they'll be, of course, we'll do some change orders in that project depending on where, how we get, which direction they tell us we can get. Knollwood Development Water System Improvements currently on hold. Gateway West Engineering Survey Preliminary Design for Gateway West been completed and was submitted to DOH on February 28th. Design's currently being reviewed by the DOH, and Jay has a vague comments revision from them on and onsite. Preliminary field review is scheduled to occur within the next two weeks. New water line replacement project, project currently on hold as it needs to be coordinated with Knollwood.
No, I didn't, not until tonight.
Quarter H South Development currently waiting on the weather to prove so the flow pressure test can be conducted at the location near the JFL property. Says that that information is on file to allow Jay to begin work on the preliminary design for the water system improvements. And that's all I have unless there are questions.
Is that all your questions?
That is it.
At the Tenerton Public Service Commission Board Meeting, when you, Tom, brought up the issue of extraneous flow, is there any conversation or?
We haven't had someone that attended that meeting here see Jay tonight.
So, how'd it go?
Well, okay.
They like you.
It was a good start.
Jerry, I've been getting a lot of questions about the projected finish date on the Third Lane.
All I can tell you, Pam, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to be smart about it, but all I can tell you is they're going to have to contact the DOH because I couldn't tell you that.
Jerry, I read in the newspaper, in a letter to the editor, that the city has spent millions of dollars on that project. Are you telling me that's not a city project?
We are not, we are, we are involved in that project as far as the relocation of the water line, just the observation of and the sewer.
We didn't request that, that was the state.
But again, Pam, that contractor, we've had, we've had preliminary, had pre-construction meetings with both the DOH and the contractor, and the completion date again in the contract was around the first of May, if you're asking my opinion, I don't think it'll make it, but again, I'm not the man to ask that question.
Other questions for Jerry? Thank you, Jerry. Tell to all the guys, we appreciate their good work, they've been busy. Next up is our Finance and Administration Director, Ambie Jenkins.
First of all, on the polycarts, the garbage cans, if anyone that is on our services, a paying customer would like to have them, we're also distributing them from City Hall. If you come in and sign up, we'll sign them to you, and you can take them home with you, but you have to have a pretty big trunk or truck to take them, they're very large. Under my report, first thing you want to do is change that number for the savings balance, so it's trying to do some quick numbers with what we got donated tonight and some of the numbers since the end of February. So, savings for Stockard East Center's capital campaign, and this is just savings count, $27,606. And then we have a capital campaign fund we've had on the books for a while, it's $151,283. I wanted to update those numbers from the last meeting that we had, because there were some questions. I've started working on the enterprise fund budgets, that's for the water, sanitary, waste and consolidated boards. In your bills to prove tonight, you'll see a Kubota was purchased by the Street Department for $14,300, so your bill's expense may look a little high, but that piece of equipment's in there. One of the things I want to talk to you about tonight, you may have to break the news to you, may have to have, may have to have a special meeting. Our insurance agent's been working with our current carrier and trying to negotiate some quotes, he's been working pretty hard with it, so they've been going back and forth with some numbers, and then we also have the interest of another insurance company. So, we have one dividend, it's our current carrier, and Travelers, who is both sending in quotes. That policy renews April 1st, so we may need to have a brief special meeting just so you can see what you might want to do. You'll remember last year, Travelers was pretty competitive. I think we have pretty good claims, so they both want this, which is good, that's good. Westfield, our property insurance is coming in at $37,760 for the year, that's the property that we have, that's overall what we're seeing there. They haven't had an increase for a while, it's about a 3% increase, but we also added those polycarts onto the insurance policy, so the overall increase this year is $1,0698, and again, that's for every department in the city, the water, the waste, the sanitary, and the general funds account.
So, about a $400?
Well, actually, waste will probably pick up a little more than that because the polycarts cost some more of the increase.
So, the general fund's more like $200, $300 each, nominal?
Yeah, we have to kind of divide all of that up each year to see what it is. So, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. The only other thing, we've got the budget to approve here tonight, we are looking in, again, into auctioning off equipment. There's been some legislative things going down through Charleston, but we already had a home rule ordinance that allows us to do auctions. We've got a couple companies that expressed interest in marketing our auction items, so I would probably, I would recommend that I bring back an RFP to put in the paper to advertise for someone to be our auction company, so that it would kind of open up and be fair to everyone. Really, that's about it. The budget's coming up here if you want.
Questions for Ambie? Thanks, Ambie, and thanks, yeah, I tell the gals out front every day, I actually appreciate them, but Ambie's got some excellent assistance out front. Next up is Police Chief Matt Gregory. Matt, how's it going?
Good.
Being safe out there, I trust?
I'm too.
Good.
I had hoped tonight to have three names to advance to council to fulfill the vacancy with the police department, however, that is not to be. We just finished up written testing just a couple of days ago. As you recall, we've been advertising for this vac, the vacancy occurred at the end of December, and we began advertising almost immediately after we got through the holidays. And once all the applications were in, we had 12 applicants, which is, I was fairly pleased with, it's a fairly good turnout. When we gave the physical agility test, we modified the way we approached the test in advance to be a little more conducive to folks who perhaps work in hopes of having more of a turnout, because the last time, well, historically, when we've given the test, not just the last time, we've generally given them through the week and the evening time. And I know in the past, there have been some conflicts, so to distance ourselves from that and in hopes of having a greater turnout of the total applicant pool, we actually moved the test to Saturday, both the physical agility as well as the written. In fact, with the written, one of the candidates had a conflict with the Civil Service Commission was so kind as to reschedule just for this particular candidate. So, the written test was actually given on two different days, just to be accommodating and get, again, as close to our true applicant pool as possible. However, even though we had augmented the strategy of moving the test to Saturday, we only had six of the 12 applicants show up for the physical agility test. When we gave the test, only three of the six passed the physical agility test, meaning that they could then advance to the written test. The second part of our strategy to help facilitate a greater applicant pool was to provide study guides to those who passed the physical agility test. In fact, we handed the guides out the day of the physical agility test. We had them sign off and receiving the guide, we gave them the guide, the guide was actually purchased from the company who writes our written tests, very well-written guides, in fact, they were small books, about 100 pages, had a sample test, which was very similar in format to what they would actually see when they came here to take their written test. Unfortunately, the three people that took the written test, not one person passed, so we have wiped out the entire applicant pool. Now, that puts us in a predicament, obviously, the vacancy still stands. We do have one person on the list, there's one person who had, chose to keep their score that we have previously tested in the past. That was the only person to communicate back to the Police Civil Service Commission and advise that they were interested in remaining part of the process and keeping their application active and keeping the score as it was. So, all we needed to have, and of course, by code, as you folks know, we need three people to interview, so we only needed two people to pass the written test. Previously, we'd given this test just to establish a list prior, actually prior to the vacancy in the fall, and had 20 applicants in addition to the 12 that we've had. These were in all individually different people, it wasn't, it wasn't repeat applicants. And so, in the last five to six months, we've had 32 applicants for this, for this position. And we pretty much saw the, almost the exact same result with the 20 applicants in the fall, only one of the 20 passed the test, and that one particular individual is not the one that's still on the list. They have, to my understanding, taken employment with another agency in another part of West Virginia and is removed from consideration. So, we're still left with the one individual who's two or three tests prior to that. That being said, I came back to the Police Civil Service Commission at the conclusion of the written test a couple of days ago, and recommended a recruitment strategy, which is included in your all's packets. The philosophy behind this recruitment strategy is to be more aggressive with our recruiting, with the goal of attaining a greater quantity of top quality applicants, so that we can have a good-sized applicant pool and establish an eligibility list. With this, we extended the deadline to receive applications to April 30th, and the philosophy to sum up, or the strategy to sum up for you folks is to advertise in several newspapers around the area, taking out block ads, establish recruitment posters, which is something we haven't done before, we're trying to think outside the box a little bit and try some things. We're in the process of designing and establishing these recruitment posters, these posters will be taken to different public areas throughout the community, advertising the position. We're also going to have an online presence through sites such as Indeed.com, which we've done in the past, but also Monster.com, as well as the above-mentioned newspapers' websites, there's different newspapers that we're buying ads with that do have online advertising as well, so we're seeking that. We're also working very closely with Kelly to have a presence on Facebook and really push out the vacancy. We're also planning on attending two employment expos throughout the month of April. One is being sponsored by Fox 10 at the Meadowbrook Mall. I have purchased a table at that location and will take out locations in hand, I will take, at the table. I will take, at the table, everything that I can to really sell the police department at that location. In addition to this package, we're also bought a tier system where we're purchasing television commercials through Fox Ten, the CW, and VTV, as well as YouTube advertising. We're also coordinating with a number of criminal justice departments throughout the region. I've identified at least six or seven colleges and universities that we're going to coordinate with, both in terms of sending our posters to their departments. Perhaps could be very timely with May graduation approaching. Perhaps we could attract some folks who are in the market for employment in the criminal justice field. But also in addition, we're also going to speak with criminal justice directors and offer, if they so choose, for us to visit the criminal justice classes to recruit. One such is, we do have an arrangement with Glenville State College currently, actually the week after, the Fox Ten Expo at the Metta Brook Mall, to attend an employment expo at the college. So again, we're going to carry this recruitment strategy and sell the police department far and wide to obtain this more vibrant applicant pool. The cost of this strategy, I've estimated about thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars. That does sound quite steep, however, I am focusing on a number of different areas. This will be paid for, I've discussed this with Ambi Jenkins. The vacancy of Patrolman Barkus, who left at the end of December, has been vacant for about three months, and we anticipate, while we go through this recruitment strategy and the hiring phase, for it to be vacant for at least another three more months. And so with his salary and benefits, which has already been budgeted for, had he stayed and continued to work here, we're not paying that out. So my suggestion to Ambi was to take a portion of that and to redirect and focus it on this recruitment strategy. Again, to really get it out there and as hard as we can. What's kept, honestly, what's kept me from doing this before in the past is time and money. We just, I just, this is a much greater step in advance to achieve this, but I feel we're at the position we need to take that step forward. What we've done the last two testing cycles isn't working. Obviously, we've tested, like I said, we've taken thirty-two applications and only one person has passed. So it's time to change our philosophy, our strategy, and really reach out like I'm suggesting. And again, that will be paid for with the money spent behind with that particular vacancy. Shifting gears a little bit, myself and Lieutenant Mauden, Tim Smith, are currently in the process of implementing new evidence management module software with our records management system. This particular module is Kalia compliant and will help us more effectively manage our property and evidence room. We're also in the process of currently training six new VIPS members, which is phenomenal. I don't know that we've ever had that many all at once, except when it first started. This brings our membership up to thirteen volunteers, which is tremendous. In fact, it's the highest it's ever been in the history of its existence. The training is taking place at the Public Safety Community Training Room, as well as our conference room. It involves both VIPS training as well as CIRC training. And we anticipate the training to conclude at the end of April, which is, again, very timely. We just write into all of the warm weather events, which we'll have several VIPS members prepared to assist with. We continue to work with the Upstate County Board of Education. I know I mentioned this when I was here last month, about collaborating with the Board of Education and working on safety drills of our schools. We continue to collaborate. We're actually having a planning meeting, another planning meeting coming up this coming Monday. And what we're working toward is a full-scale emergency drill at the Buchanan Academy Elementary School, which we have a tentative date right now at the beginning of June. So as that comes together more, we'll certainly nail that date down, get that out, and certainly would like to see as many of you folks come and see how that all plays out. And then finally, of course, you may have seen this in the news, we've been very busy lately with a particular case that occurred at the end of February at the Colonial Motel, involving a robbery, kidnapping case. We do have one suspect that was arrested, taken into custody at the scene. He is going through the court process. Through our investigations, we have identified three more people who were involved in that. Each of those individuals are being charged with ranging from conspiracy all the way up to the co-defendant in this case is also being charged with kidnapping, robbery charges. They are all in NCIC and awaiting arrest. I was just informed this morning that one of the subjects, whose name is Takiis Nasir Bethay, was arrested in Camden, New Jersey last night on our warrants, and so now we're just coordinating with Camden to arrange extradition back to West Virginia for these charges. And we'll certainly wait on the other two as well, so that we can coordinate their extradition as well. We have been in contact with the local agencies as these individuals were entered into NCIC, as well as statewide broadcasts out by virtue of the NCIC entry. So they are aware of them, and they are wanted individuals, and again, we're just waiting on them to be taken into custody.
What's their profile, did you say anything?
Profile?
Well, I mean, where are they from?
The, they're all three from the Camden, New Jersey area. There are several little suburbs, if you will, around, Camden is actually just on the other side of the Delaware River from Philadelphia, and that's one large urban area that's just made up of all kinds of different municipalities. So they are all from that area. The, to our understanding, Mr. Bethay, the individual who was just arrested and awaiting extradition back to West Virginia, is involved in a gang in Camden. In fact, I was told that he is a high-level member in the gang.
The, you know, there's an awful lot of information going out there in different, whether you watch, depending on what you listen to and watch, is MS-13 and other, the proliferation of gangs in this country is unbelievable.
Yeah.
And they're going into, I used to live near Camden. I lived in a very nice area called Haddonfield, New Jersey. And Camden has, I think one year they had, out of twenty people running for mayor, it's fifteen of them were felons.
Yeah.
And it's a very, very depressing area.
It's consistently in the top ten of the worst places to live in America.
Oh, yeah.
So why they live in Buchanan?
Yeah, what's the connection to here?
Why living in Buchanan?
That's a good question. The, really, the main conspirator is the individual by the name of Michaelina Sarn. She arranged, she actually arranged for her brother to meet her at the local motel in hopes of robbing him. And she brought these two individuals down with her, the two males, to commit the robbery.
So is she her brother from here?
She is, I don't know if she's originally from here, but she had lived in the southern part of the county at one time.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, Mayor, that's all I have under my regular report unless there's any other questions.
Thanks, Matt. Questions for Chief Gregory? We're going to bring you back up here in just a few minutes. Correspondence and information, we're going to run through this quickly so we can get down to strategic. You have the follow-up from Jason Keeling with the American Red Cross. There's a letter of support that I executed with the Upstate County Development Authority endorsing their efforts to establish the opportunity zones. There's a letter of support that I did that went to Governor Justice concerning tax incremental financing. We have in your packet a waiver approval from the West Virginia Division of Culture and History, waiting to hear about the next batch of funding for the Colonial Theater. We're told things look good, but we just got to wait and see. There's a letter from Brick Street Insurance regarding the Safety Committee presentation that was conducted on February 12th. There is a letter from the West Virginia Alcohol Beverage Control Commission regarding Stone Tower Brew's application. And there is a press release that Callie mentioned to you a little bit ago, Buchanan celebrating its new water tank atop Victoria Hill. Consent agenda consists-
I have a quick question on one of those. The, sorry, so first, the waiver from the Department of Culture and History says their plan for programming is due by April 1st?
Bryson has filed it. It's-
Who worked on the plan for programming?
Bryson is our architect and is designated-
Oh, it's not like, it's not the programming that goes in it, it's?
No, no, it's part of the architectural plan.
Architectural programming?
Yeah. Well, Bryson's handling all that, that's all I know. Consent agenda consists of three items. The approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting on March 1st, the approval of building and wiring permits, and the approval of the payment of our bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. May I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second by Council Lady Albaugh. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving our consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like signed motion carries, takes us down to strategic issues for discussion and/or vote. First is the Fire Civil Service Commission's recommendation establishing the three candidates that they propose the council interview for hiring as a probationary firefighter. And somewhere in this god-awfully thick packet, Alloy would normally have me-
Yeah, you're not telling the truth there, Mary. You're supposed to tell him-
He's supposed to know this better than I am.
He's busy leading the team.
We got the, we got the candidates in there somewhere.
I was just looking for it too. I don't know if it's in the right order.
Oh, here they are. Cade Daniel Johnston and Ethan Jacob Smith, actually tied for first, and Dakota William Shaver. Those are the three candidates being certified as the list of eligible persons at stake for us to conduct our interviews. I would first entertain a motion that we accept those three candidates, and then we'll try to figure out a date when we can conduct the interviews.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner to accept the list of eligible from the Fire Civil Service Commission. May I have a second to his motion?
Tell me.
I have a second by Council Lady Albaugh. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like signed motion carries. Takes us down, oh, wait a second, we got to establish a date for the interviews. Do you guys have any, you know, I think Chief Kimball, the sooner we do this, the better off we'll be.
Let me just look at accounts. Doesn't matter.
This is March 15th. We have a utility board meeting and the Chamber of Commerce meeting on the 22nd. Ambi, would it be too late to put this off until March 29th, two weeks from tonight?
No.
Does that give us time to get the notice out to the three candidates that we would interview them at that time? What say ye if we convened at six o'clock, did three half-hour interviews, that's typically how long these things last, and maybe factor in an extra half-hour's worth of discussion after that? Six to eight on Thursday, the 29th, would that work?
Works for me.
Does it not, does it work for everyone? Susan, is that what you hear?
Well, I used to recess, I'm not sure I'll be in town, but you don't need me. Someone from Skat can watch.
Okay, yeah, all right. So I would entertain a motion that we convene a special meeting in the city council two weeks from tonight, Thursday, March 29th, at six o'clock to conduct the interviews. I have a motion by Council Lady Albaugh.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Newrylands. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like signed. Remember, we'll get a reminder out to you, two weeks from tonight, six to eight, to interview our potential new probationary firefighter. Next is the approval to authorize a memorandum of understanding for the Buchanan Police Department to join the new Mountain Lakes Task Force, along with the state police, the agencies in Lewis County and Braxton County, and one of the agencies actually down in Gilmore County. Is that correct, Chief Gregory?
Right now, I don't think so. It's just, I'm sure it goes to Braxton.
Okay, we're waiting to hear on that potential additional entity. Is that fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Matt, you want to brief us a little bit on this? You know, this is something that I was very much engaged with during my time as the town attorney, advocated for this quite a lot, and council kind of balked at that point. We didn't delegate, make the funding happen that needed to happen.
Well, I think another part of the problem there at the time, and again, as you recall, we discussed this for a number of years, and you and I had looked at the number of options for Buchanan to get more involved in the drug investigation in this regard many years ago, at least four or five years ago. And I think about the issue at the time was, we actually had an opportunity to join one just to the east of us that comprised Randolph and Hook Honeis County. And I know that was kind of a little point of discussion in terms of just looking at the geographic boundary and commonalities and things, so that kind of kept us from going that. But I know that just getting everybody together in terms of finding those commonalities and geographic similarities, to be able to make it happen, to get everybody to agree to do that, that, I think that is what's kind of, more than anything, that kind of kept that from coming together. But we're fortunate now.
Matt, many of the council members were in support of-
Yeah, absolutely. I know we've, in fact, we've discussed it here at council a number of times, and we're in a unique position now to where, across the board with these respective agencies, we have a tremendous rapport and really have had with one another from the administration all the way down through the rank and file. And I believe that with this opportunity that's before us, we really are poised to see it advance and see some success from it. Mayor, if you'll indulge me with that, I usually don't like to read at you guys, but I did reduce my thoughts of the task force to writing. I thought it was the best way that I could convey the proposal to you. So if you would, over the past several years, the city of Buchanan has seen an upward trend in problems relating to drugs. This is evidenced by not only crime statistics, both in terms of crimes directly related to drug usage and drug sales, as well as indirectly in the form of crimes inspired by or affected by drug usage, but also in issues that are seen across multiple fronts, i.e. health issues, overdoses, family issues, school issues, et cetera. And we see that happen over and over again through our community, not only in my reports, whether it be my monthly and annual reports to council, but also just open up a newspaper, look at a news story. We see these things happen over and over again in our community. And I believe, as I say in this last statement, the epidemic has truly become a pox on our society. Buchanan is not unique to these sorts of problems, however. The drug problems mentioned above do not know any type of boundaries. They don't discriminate by age, sex, race, color, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, or geographic location. It's for these reasons that dictate why the problem is so pervasive. In dealing with an issue as large as this, I have long been a proponent that the answer lies not just with a single solution, but should come from a multifaceted approach. To use a sports analogy, the drug epidemic requires a full-court press. On the enforcement front, the Buchanan Police Department, along with many other agencies, both local, state, and federal, in our region, have stepped up enforcement efforts over the past several years. This can be seen with an examination of the crime report data itself, as I just discussed. Beyond that, there have been a number of efforts throughout the community in the recent past that have focused on education, prevention, treatment, and recovery, all important in their own respects. Much work has been done, but there is still much work to do. In response, the Buchanan Police Department has been presented with an opportunity to further address the drug issues involving our- further address the drug issues involving our community. I've been approached by the West Virginia State Police BCI, which stands for Bureau of Criminal Investigation, and have been invited to join a drug task force that will comprise Upshur County, Lewis County, and Braxton County. In addition to the West Virginia State Police, law enforcement agencies from each of these respective counties will comprise the makeup of the task force. Specifically, to delve into the memorandum of understanding, which is also provided in your packets, we're looking at at least one, possibly two members from the West Virginia State Police, a part-time member from the Weston Police Department, a full-time member from the Lewis County Sheriff's Department, a full-time member from the Braxton Sheriff's Department, a full-time member from the Upshur County Sheriff's Department, and if you all so approve tonight, a full-time member from the Buchanan Police Department. Information and resources amongst these agencies will be shared, and work will be done to address the issues that affect not just us, but the entire region as mentioned above. This task force is yet another solution to the many-sided issues that we see and have seen with drugs. I also believe that this solution is certainly a worthwhile endeavor, as it stands to chance of yielding many positive results. Through the enforcement investigation efforts of this task force, perhaps it will save lives. Perhaps it will lead more people to treatment that might not otherwise seek treatment on their own. Perhaps it will stem the tide of dangerous drugs that seep their way into every corner of our community. Pervasive drug issues require a multifaceted approach. I am therefore proposing that the mayor and city council authorize the Buchanan Police Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the above-mentioned agencies for the purpose of joining and participating in a drug task force. If authorized, we are prepared to commit one of our officers full-time to work with this task force. We are not asking for the hiring of another police officer to replace him, even though this appointment will yield a vacancy on the schedule. Only when the task force becomes self-sufficient and helps through either grants, forfeitures, or other funding, would we entertain this replacement. In the interim, we will utilize our part-time positions to help with any schedule gaps that may occur. The Buchanan Police Department will continue to operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, without any interruptions to our services. Additionally, we have worked with Ambie Jenkins, Jerry Armit, and Tom O'Neill on the logistical details of this arrangement. We are prepared to commit $1,000 from the current Buchanan Police Department budget, and ask that council commit $4,000 more to contribute to the task force to serve as startup money. This will match Lewis County's contribution and will go toward the general operation of the task force and its facility for sustains its utilities for the task force's office. Again, as the task force continues to operate and become self-sufficient, it will generate its own funds through the sources mentioned above to allow for its continued operation. Alluding back to the memorandum of understanding, each full-time, each agency that commits a full-time member to the task force will have representation, what's known as the Board of Directors. That will be the administrators of each department, who will meet regularly to supervise the work of the members of the task force, as well as to discuss strategies and information that we receive from our respective agencies, so that the work will continue and be shared across the board. In addition to that, any assets that are seized above and beyond the operating costs of the task force will be eligible for equitable sharing to each agency that is part of the task force. I therefore urge council to act in the affirmative on this tonight, as it will undoubtedly be another effort to keep the quality of life high in our community and surrounding areas while reducing the threat of the pervasive drug issues that is threatened and continues to threaten us all. And I just alluded just a little bit to the makeup of the memorandum of understanding. I know that I had afforded this to Tom O'Neill to look at. I'm not sure if he wanted to chime in and offer any thoughts on it as well.
Well, I don't have any, I don't have any heartburn about the MOU. I have a question, though. I, I don't recall, and I'm just trying to find it now, the $5,000 startup money.
Yeah, it's not mentioned specifically in here.
It's not talked about in there, but what I'd probably want to recommend to the council has some assurance that each participating agency is putting up, you know, the same amount of upfront money to this, and I'd probably recommend that maybe this be amended to reflect that, you know, that every agency participating has to kick in the same amount to get things started.
Yeah, I'm not sure about each agency. I got the, I've been in close contact with Lewis County and the BCI, and actually, I started the question with BCI and asked them about an appropriate amount for startup costs, and they had stated, you know, they didn't give me an exact amount because of fluctuates from one agency to another with their experience with other task forces. So the benchmark that I had of $5,000 was what Lewis County is actually contributing to this, to, because they're currently working on the task force facilities and getting things started up, and I, my understanding, that's what their contribution to this is. So that gave me the benchmark to, at least how you figure to approach council with tonight, with that.
So these other four, the state police, Weston, Braxton County, and Upshur County, are all kicking in $5,000?
I, I saw, actually saw that Upshur County is looking at three. So how does that affect the distribution?
If there are forfeitures, that they will be divided proportionally to the amount given by each agency?
Correct, yeah. It's, it's broken down equally, equitable sharing amongst each of the agencies that have full-time commitment. Now, Weston is the only agency that is planning on having a part-time commitment. They will receive a, it's my understanding, a 50% portion of their equitable share.
This is something I've been a proponent and advocate of for years. You might remember, it's been four or five years ago, Bill Elinfield, who was then our federal prosecutor for the Northern District of West Virginia, came to several of the meetings when we, we thought we were on the cusp of forming something then, and it was like perfect timing. Adam Gissy had just become sheriff over in Lewis County, former Buchanan City Patrol Officer. We have an excellent working relationship with the folks over in Lewis County. I think it's something, you know, we got a $4.3 million general fund. If we can't scrounge around and find $5,000 to make this start, and understand that these other places that have task force, the Harrison County Task Force, the Marion, Mon County Task Force, those are all self-sufficient entities now, because they, they seize properties, they convert it to cash, that's what makes those organizations go. But you got to have a little startup, Captain.
Yeah, they're, they're starting from zero at this point, because it's brand-new to this region. In fact, there's task forces all around us. This is kind of the gap in central West Virginia that doesn't have one right now.
Well, connectivity and networking is really critical.
Absolutely.
And again, I think the council in the past, we were in support of doing this, but for whatever reason, we just couldn't get the connectivity that was needed. I, David, I, Mary, I'd make a motion, though, I think we need to do this. I have a motion by Councilman Thomas, and his motion would be to not only have us join the task force, but to authorize me to sign the appropriate memorandum of understanding.
Well, that's what, also, that's what I was going to ask. It's, what, what is the motion? Because your signature is on.
Oh, well, Matt can drive.
I make a motion that we undertake the starting of the task force and working with these other agencies, and that we also provide, from our perspective, $5,000 to get-
Okay, that was my next question.
I have a motion, I have a second by, motion is by Mr. Thomas. The second is by Council Lady Capery. Is there discussion on that motion?
Which budget year is this?
This would be immediately out of the 13, 14,000 bucks we have remaining in our contingent funds for the rest of 2017, 18. So that's going to leave us with about eight or nine thousand bucks, right, Ambie?
Yeah, but let me work on it.
Okay.
I have to bring back the budget revision to you anyway.
Yeah, great.
And we have to consistently look at this budget now every month, because we're getting so close to the end of the year stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll figure it out.
We, we, we got, we'll find our four or five thousand bucks.
Okay, couple questions for the motion. Matt, is the, the formal name of the task force, this Mountain Lakes Drug-
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the violent crime part is part of the-
Yes, yeah.
So is there violent crime other than, so all the violent crimes attached to the-
Well, anytime you would have, for instance, this robbery that's really absorbed an enormous amount of our agency's manpower, had this task force been in existence at the time, members of that task force could have investigated or assisted in the investigation of that robbery. If you have a homicide in your particular jurisdiction, this task force could assist with that, because a lot of times, not always, but in a lot of these situations, we see overlap, as what we saw in the Quine Motel. That was a drug-inspired.
So is, is this, is this task force already established and we're joining, or are all of these organizations coming together right this second to form?
Yep, yep.
So all the same time?
Yeah, because there's, the memorandum of understanding is more than just the separate pages.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure-
We just didn't have time to read.
Sure, sure. Sorry.
We actually had this as two separate questions.
Right, that was, that was my next question.
Yeah, two. Mr. Thomas has moved that we authorize the memorandum of understanding to join the task force with the state police, Lewis County, and Braxton County. Is that your motion, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I had a second by Council Lady Capery to that motion. We've discussed the motion. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion to join the task force, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes shall reflect that the motion carries unanimously. That takes us down to F3, which is the approval to appropriate $4,000, because Matt has a thousand in his budget already for this, so it's a total of five, but we're going to take four from our remaining contingent funds to assist in the startup of this. I would entertain a motion that we appropriate those funds. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas, and I have a second to his motion. Council Lady Albaugh has seconded that motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Matt, we thank you for bringing this. We look forward to partnering as, and this, there's, you know, to say, oh, wow, we're finally going to start working with the guys over in Lewis County. We, we work all the time with our cohorts in Lewis County, but this takes that cooperative partnership to an entirely new level.
Yeah, so it's a natural next step forward.
Yeah, so, thank you. Give Adam Gissy our best. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, F4 is the approval of our fiscal year general fund budget for 2018, 19. We've been talking about this for a couple of months and had all kinds of special meetings. Ambie hasn't changed anything, I don't think. She might have snuck in some secret Mexico fund or something. That's a horrible thing to joke about.
The only thing you'll see there is that. Now we're going to have to go through the whole frigging line by line to make sure she's in it.
I know. Berkestrm, that'll be the headlines in the record dollar, right? I would entertain a motion that we approve-
Well, Mary's just moved up to the top of the stage.
I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh, and a second by Mr. Rylance. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll-
I want to say again, like I said last time, the legislature needs to come together at some point in time, and to approve this budget now, three and a half months before our fiscal year starts, and we don't have one of the largest budgetary items, we won't know until April, it's just not, it's antiquated. We, we need to make some changes, but I'll, I'll approve the motion.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Ambie for all of her work and for explaining everything so well, and the department has to. It's just really easy to follow this issue. Thank you.
Lot of late nights that you drive past City Hall, and Ambie and Barbara are in here. Yeah, God bless them.
And we are approving this, you know, knowing that we will have to do a revision just shortly after the first of the fiscal year.
You're spot on. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The F5 item, strategic, is to set at 9:00 a.m. on April 17 to lay our levy, to establish our annual levy rate. This is a very perfunctory, I think last year it took four minutes. After we did the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance, it took about a minute. So if we can have a quorum of four, we can set the levy on April 17, 2018, I'd entertain a motion that we set the levy date.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. May I have a second to his motion? I have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. You have in your packet, if I can find it.
It's almost at the end.
God, what a packet.
It's right after the levy.
Christmas.
Right before Strawberry Festival, right after levy.
Right before Strawberry Festival.
It's in, yeah, it's in the order of, it was just, Matt's was out of order because it was up with his report.
Oh, is that one?
Yeah, you got to go past all of that.
Close to the end.
Yes.
This one?
It's after the levy.
Before all your propaganda. Before all my propaganda.
A resolution.
All that paper, tree-killing things that I do.
Right, it's right after the levy, but it's still-
All right, this is, this is resolute, and this is actually, Kelly has departed the scene, but this is actually to help facilitate her quest for funds for us. It also would be a position taken by the current city council, because there's been no espousal for three-plus years relative to public arts. So bear with me, I'll read fast. Whereas on January 15, 2015, the then-city council unanimously resolved pursuant to Resolution 201501 of the City of Buchanan to generally support the public arts, and whereas a majority of the current city council members were not then members of the January 15, 2015 city council, and the current city council believes it to be important to establish its own position on support for our community's public arts, and whereas historically supportive citizens from throughout our Buchanan Upshur community, including civic, educational, business, and governmental leaders, have come together to fully and enthusiastically endorse the establishment and expansion of comprehensive public arts initiatives throughout our Buchanan Upshur community, and whereas the Buchanan Upshur Public Art Initiative has included, but has not been limited to, the establishment of sculptures, murals, paving patterns, improved lighting, boating facade improvements, kiosks, gates, fountains, play equipment, engravings, carvings, frescoes, mobiles, collages, mosaics, faux reliefs, tapestries, photographs, drawings, artwork, and decorative signage, and whereas in its broader sense, the support for public arts further includes the performing and other arts, that is music, theater, the cinema, dance, literature and literary and poetic readings, the celebration of festivals and general connectedness to history, as evidenced in part by Wilson and Kelling's acclaimed 1982 work, The Broken Windows Theory, in which reference was made to public art as being, quote, "a professionally designed mural, three stories high, a bicycle rack bent in the shape of an elephant, and a neighborhood's history slated on the train station walls." Public art can be almost anything, but it must foremost serve the public, be reflective of its sense of place, and representative of the community for which it is created, and whereas various studies have concluded that public art has a substantial positive effect on local economies by increasing tourism, civic engagement, and establishing gathering places for community members, and whereas other studies also have found that there appears to be a strong correlation between crime rates and establishment of public art whereby communities adopting public art initiatives are less likely to be victimized by criminal acts than those communities who fail to embrace public arts initiatives, and whereas for the aforementioned reasons, support for the public arts is a matter that should merit the strongest support of the governing bodies of our community, and finally, whereas the council, the City of Buchanan, desires to strongly manifest our city's endorsement and support for our BU community's public art initiative, while also reserving the city's opportunity to facilitate in some manner funding and other municipal support for our community's public art initiatives, while partnering with civic, educational, business, and other governmental leaders and organizations to develop and realize thorough public art plan implementation through our Buchanan Upshur community. The enumerated paragraphs largely embrace what I just read, except I would point out paragraph three under the things that as follows. That inclusion of and support for organizations and groups, such as the Stacker Youth Center, Upshur Arts Alliance, Buchanan Community Theater, Buchanan Choral Society, Art 26201, Artistry on Main, Create Buchanan, Sundays Music on the River Program, Festival Fridays, the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, the Buchanan Upshur Camera Club, West Virginia Wesleyan College- Upshire Camera Club, West Virginia Wesleyan College, the Upshire County School System, and the Upshire County Historical Society are vital to the success of our community's public arts initiatives. Ladies and gentlemen, you know what this is about. We're not appropriating any money here tonight, but it is something that would look good as an attachment to a grant application as we attempt to help all of the public arts in our community. I would be happy and pleased to entertain a motion that we approve this resolution. I have a motion to Mr. Rylands. I have a second by Council Lady Capery. Is there discussion on the motion?
I just would make one comment. In organizations that you listed, I'd like for the Buchanan Upshire Chamber of Congress to be listed in there too. We do a lot of support in the arts, and in fact, our entire evening next week is themed around arts and education. So if you wouldn't mind adding us to that, we would like to participate and support.
I don't mind that. Could I have an amended motion to reflect the inclusion of the Buchanan Upshire Chamber of Congress?
So moved.
Second.
I still have the motion and the second by Thomas and Capery.
Well, before it was Rylands and Capery. Do they have to amend that motion, or we make?
We're amending the motion.
Okay, so to include, you need to make a motion to amend the motion?
They just made the motion and a second. They made the motion to amend the original motion to include the Buchanan Upshire Chamber of Congress. Motion by Thomas, second by Capery.
Okay.
So now, we have the amended motion on the table. Is there discussion on the amended motion?
Yes. I just want to point out that I have strong support for the arts and for the city involvement in the arts, but I'll be abstaining from this vote because my term ends in June, and understandably, the types of things that will be supported and the type of funding that the city will apply for the support can't be known at this point, and I won't be here to be held accountable for the results of this vote. So I'm just going to abstain. But I do not want it to be interpreted as not supporting the arts.
I might not be hearing that either.
It's just too vague for me to...
It's still in sit-ups, Shannon.
But I'm hoping.
Susan, we still have to approve the different kinds of grants and funding levels every time we do something, so.
That's the thing I'm going to say.
I float right up to the bitter end, but I'm not here, that's all right. We have a motion to say, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'm going to call for the question. This is a roll-call vote.
Correct.
Mayor votes yes. Dr. Alloway is abstaining. Pam Capery?
Yes.
Mary Albaugh?
Yes.
Robert Skinner III?
Yes.
Clifford J. Rylands?
Yes.
J. David Thomas?
Yep.
We need your signatures too.
Matter passes. Takes us down to F7, which is to accept the resignation of Ian Crozier from our planning commission. I would ask that you all between now and the April 5 meeting, feel free to email me a nominee if you have somebody that we could replace him as quickly as possible.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas to accept the resignation. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Albaugh. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of accepting the resignation of Ian Crozier from the planning commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. We thank Ian for his service.
Yes.
Letter of request, West Virginia Strawberry Festival Association. Ambie, what the heck are they looking for? Is that the...
I talked to Jerry. They want pretty much everything they asked for the last time Jerry...
Yeah, there's 15 different items in your packet. Dear Mayor McCully and council members, West Virginia Strawberry Festival Association would like to request funding to cover the Queen's float, $1,500. Coronation, $2,500. One-half of the cost of the law enforcement breakfast of $1,000 for a total of $5,000. Any funding would be greatly appreciated. The West Virginia Strawberry Festival Association would like to make the following requests for the use of city-owned property and services during the 77th annual event on May 12 through 20, 2018. One, the use of the parking lot across from the Buchanan Post Office along with the Jawbone Park area for the carnival or additional spaces for gamble amusement, May 12 through 20. Two, permission for the four parades to use Strawberry Lane, we all know where the parade route is. Three, the use of Camden Avenue, Pocahontas, Wood, Randolph, Tucker, Marion, College Avenue for the purpose of parade lineup for all four parades. Four, permission to place licensed vendors and marketing booths on various locations throughout the city, primarily Spring Street and Main Street. Five, permission to use Main Street from City Hall to the courthouse for the Wednesday evening car show, also Friday and Saturday street parties. The street will need to be closed following the parades. This time is needed to do setup. The activities will conclude by midnight each evening. Six, permission for a one-way on Spring Street during the day and to block Spring and Madison Streets during carnival hours. Seven, the use of the parking lot on Spring Street for vendors and supply trucks, the parking lot of the Buchanan Fire Department, and the use of the property by the formerly Chase Bank for vendor-supply truck parking. Eight, the use of the Buchanan River for the purpose of a canoe race, that's Sunday. Nine, the use of city water and dumpsters on the food vendor lot, also the dumpster at the Latham House. Ten, the complimentary sanitary sewage dumping for visiting buses. Eleven, the use of the Buchanan Fire Department's fire hydrant adapter for a water hose EMS needs on Grand Feature Parade Day at the city library. Twelve, request for any street repair along the parade route to avoid accidents. Thirteen, the use of the city workers to help with street decorations. I guess we won't have those anymore, huh, Jerry Arnold? Fourteen, requesting the road-close barricades for parade lineup on streets. List will begin into the street department. And fifteenth and lastly, request for participation of the city police department during festival week. We will work with the chief on special arrangements for the various events. I think this is almost identical to what we approved last year. It was probably the same before that year. I have a motion by Skinner and a second by Albaugh. Is there discussion on the motion?
Are we approving their full request dollar amount of funding?
My motion is that we approve what they requested.
Okay, thank you. And who was the second?
Me.
So, but the question is big. Does that include the $5,000?
He said it did.
$5,000?
Already had that budget.
We've already...
It's already in the budget.
So we previously approved it?
Yep.
Already had that budget for this year.
But I would remind the council that for 2018-19, we have not yet appropriated any money for the Strawberry Festival. But hopefully come after the first of the new fiscal year, we'll be in a better...
But this $5,000 we approved during last...
Sure it does.
Got it. So we don't need to approve it?
No. Just the list.
Okay, got it.
Motion by Skinner, second by Albaugh. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, boy, we're flying now, aren't we? We're down to F9, which is a recommendation from the Stockard Youth Center Board of Directors to rename the Stockard Youth Center to the Stockard Youth and Community Center. You might recall that there's been a lot of discussion during the past year or two about reaching out to other constituencies that should want to use this complex, especially if we realize a new gymnasium auditorium, the adult basketball league people, both men and women, more zumba, more senior citizens participating in events there. This is something that was unanimously recommended by the Stockard Board. I would entertain a motion that we begin to redo our brand just a little bit with Stockard by adding the words "and" "community" to Stockard Youth Center.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Rylands.
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Albaugh. Is there any discussion on this motion?
And this was recommended by the board?
It was.
I'm reading it right, yes.
It was a recommendation by the Stockard Board. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Takes us down to comments and announcements. Mary Albaugh, what do you have for us?
I don't have anything. Just looking after all this. That's enough.
Council Lady Capery, what do you have for us?
Just want to let people know that I'm going to start the meetings for the Fourth of July events. My first meeting will be April 2 on Monday at 5:30 here, and I'm meeting volunteers, and I'm hoping to get some people in the community to do some funding for us.
Yeah, we've got to raise some money, right?
Yes.
I'm good for $100. I'm always good for $100.
Thank you.
I'll remember that.
Directions I went to take.
Is that a challenge?
That's a challenge, yeah. Challenge everybody to give $100. If 50 people gave $100...
That's right.
I think you should get it for compounded annually.
And also, we will be doing on July the 16 coordination with the Great Buchanan Festival Fridays.
That's worked out really well the last couple of years. Anything else, Pam?
Nope, that's it.
Mr. Rylands, what do you got for us?
I'd like to congratulate the girls' high school basketball team.
Yay!
Representing our community well, not only on the court but off the court, and, you
know, watching the way they handled themselves in victory and defeat. I thought it was a great representation. Goes out to them.
And that group of girls started out Stockard Youth Center together.
They did. Deborah can tell you all about it when they were 10, 12 years old, right? Dribbling those balls over there, yeah. Anything else, CJ?
That's it.
Mr. Skinner?
I too would like to congratulate the girls as the resident Buchanan Upshire alum on council. I was in Charleston Friday night and Saturday night, and I was very proud of them. They are, they're one heck of a group of girls. They represented this community fantastically. I would like to see them come here and be recognized again as state runner-ups. Three more points, we'd have had it. It was, you know, it was great to see too, there must have been 1,200 people from this town at Charleston. And when you look over at Parkersburg and you see about 70 people in red and you see 1,200 to 1,500 in blue, I mean, that's a statement that this community is proud of our girls and what we do outside of Buchanan. One thing, there was just one little comment that did kind of bug me tonight, and I'm hoping that we can, you know, maybe we can add someone else to our department and board reports. When Susan asked about the West Virginia Division of Culture and History, what Bryson was working on, and it was just, oh, Bryson's got it, you know, we don't have to worry about it. Bryson is key to this organization and so many major projects that we're working on. I would like to ask that Bryson be on our agenda periodically to give us an update with the theater, give us an update, since he's kind of the city liaison with the Innovation Center, to kind of let us know where, we've heard the development authority side several times, I'd like to hear what's going on from the city side. You know, I think the community would appreciate knowing more. I just would like to get him here, not every meeting, maybe not every month, but periodically, just to give us a quick update so that we understand what's going on, and it's not just, oh, Bryson's got it, you know. It's not that I don't trust Bryson, I love Bryson to death. I just want, I want to fully understand, and I know that I think I want our community to fully understand, is he is in a key position with a lot of projects that we are very well invested in at this point. So that's all I've got.
That's a good idea. He does, Bryson does report directly to Jerry Arnold, and while Jerry doesn't technically include him as a separate thing in his report, he's had a lot of impact on a lot of those things. But that's a well-taken point, and we'll extend that invitation to him and try to get him here soon.
Appreciate it.
Anything else, Robin?
That's all.
Mr. J. David Thomas?
I agree with what everybody said in the comments. And I do have one, I was really alarmed when Matt said, out of 33 applicants, only one passed the written test. And that's very concerning. I think there's a major change in our culture. I mentioned that last time about the, we have a culture that sort of celebrates violence and drugs and everything else that is very, our youth is being just bombarded with different types of... You get points for killing somebody in a video game with a nine or 10-year-old as part of your company, and it's so, people that I haven't seen for 26 years, but they said it's so realistic. And we've got to change our culture somehow with the way we're just providing more and more violence in our society. And I know Facebook is talking about trying to put an app out there so that 5, 6, 7, 8-year-olds can get on social media. Everybody says, oh, well, you'll be restricted, but there's always ways to get around it. So I'm just very concerned about that. I appreciate what our law enforcement does, and the task force, I think is very important for us, and please keep up the good work. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. I will be sending to you, I just got it earlier today, 3:20 p.m. in fact, is when I forwarded it to Teresa Summers, and Tom O'Neill will also be getting this. Earlier, it was county government that had joined together to file the lawsuits against the major pharmaceutical companies for the vast opioid dumpings. And now the City of Huntington and a number of other cities have joined the counties in this huge lawsuit. And the West Virginia Municipal League has reached out to all of its members, including Buchanan, proposing that we also join that lawsuit. We will send this packet of stuff that we just got this afternoon out to you all tomorrow, but I would like to have that on the March 5 agenda, after Tom weighs in, actually, March 5, April 5, good grief.
Mary, you have to leave.
At the April 5 agenda. We'll take this up then. So that's coming your way. I was also going to compliment the girls' basketball team, and we are looking to have them here, maybe as early as one of the April meetings. Next Tuesday, March 20, is going to be a great day in Buchanan. At 11:30, we're going to meet in front of the Colonial Theater and have, what are we calling it in the...
Sledgehammer Day.
Sledgehammer Day, yeah.
Oh, wow.
It's actually being promoted by our architect Bryson Van Nooster, and it's Get Hammered at the Colonial. Remember, it was a bar for like 40 years. But we're going to chip off the stone facade at the Colonial Theater and try to get a few dignitaries there to support the effort. But anybody else who wants to come down and swing a sledge, it's a dollar or a swipe, too.
Yeah.
You've got to wear your goggles and helmet to be safe.
Susan may want to take a sledgehammer knee, you forgot her.
Yeah, she, oh, yeah, she got that. Yes.
Are you going to let me do it, Mayor?
That's what happens. Since she abstained on that one thing, she doesn't get called by...
Sorry, you forgot me, too.
And you totally skipped over Tom O'Neill's report.
Well, it's because it's 9:30, it's not, no offense, guys.
Susan, do you got anything for us?
I do have a quick question. You may be getting to it when you get to your mayor's comments, that the downtown development talking points, there's a date attached to it, March 9, 2018. What was that for? Or was that just the date you guys wrote it? I just was curious about the purpose of it. It's the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 thing listed under your mayor's comments and announcements.
Is it in the packet?
It is. It's the last thing in the, second to the last, right before the sledgehammer. It says downtown development talking points, March 9, 2018, Foster, Van Nooster, Rylands...
We had a meeting with one of the new substantial property folks, Travis Foster, who's just spent over a million dollars on acquiring a bunch of different properties. So in the spirit of complete transparency, so that you all knew what the talking points were at that meeting, I asked Teresa to put it in the packet.
Okay. So you had a meeting with him on the night?
We had a meeting with those folks that are identified, Travis Foster, Bryson Van Nooster, CJ, myself. It says Jerry Arnold, but Jerry got, went out and got sick, so he wasn't there. But, yeah, that's, these are the things that we talked about.
And what did he buy, what did he purchase?
He purchased the church on Florida Street. He purchased the hall property at $480,000 on the corner across from the Innovation Center. He's, what are the other properties? Five or six of them altogether.
North Spring Street property, there's a building next to the church.
Yeah, yours is insurance.
Yeah, so what's he planning to do? Did he say, different things in different places?
Luxury...
He's got several plans.
Wants to upgrade apartments and some business entities.
I was just curious what that was for, because it had a date.
Sweet Alisis, or Sweet Alisis, is that what it's called? He owns that building.
He's, they're, part of that renovation is, he's working with them on that.
Oh, okay.
Anything else, Susan?
Nope.
Tom, I apologize. You want to give us a quick skinny?
No.
Thank you, Tom.
Best reporter than I've been.
Just keep sending the checks, you know. You've got all kinds of comments from things that we've participated in in the last couple of weeks. I would like to... I would like to personally invite all the members of council to next Tuesday's events, 11:30 in front of the theater. You get a free swipe. You don't have to pay a buck to take a crack at a rock. And then at 4 o'clock, we'll convene at Jawbone Park. It's supposed to be 48 and rainy is the long-term forecast, but we'll keep our fingers crossed. We're gonna do a spring celebration to kick off the new, hopefully warmer, season. Another thing I would ask the council to consider, as we edge closer to having half of the funding for realizing the new auditorium gymnasium at Stockard, rather than wait another 20 years to raise the other $200,000 bucks, I gotta wonder whether it's time for us to look at some creative financing. There's still 3% money available through the USDA. I don't want to shoulder debt with the next generation, but at the same time, I'd like